I'd like to go ahead and call the regular board meeting of the Huron Valley Schools to order. Our secretary, Ms. Pistana, is on her way. She's stuck in traffic, so in the meantime, I'm going to have Member Cotter assume those roles. So with that, Ms. Cotter, could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mrs. Ryan?
Here.
Mrs. Dodd?
Here.
Mrs. Grisimkoski?
Here.
Ms. Cotter is here.
I am here.
Thank you, Jacob. Oh, and Mr. Weisman.
I'm here, too.
All right, except for Denise, we are all here.
All right, and she's on her way. Everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next, we have approval of agenda. The agenda is in front of you. Could I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
And do I have a second?
I'll support.
All right, motion made by Member Dodd, seconded by Member Grisimkoski. Is there any questions or comments as it relates to the agenda? Seeing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, I'm going to try this again. Okay, Mrs. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Grisimkoski?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter, is he yes? Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
I didn't write his name down, that's why I said that. And Mr. Weisman?
Yes, yes.
I've got to go get that paper.
All right. As a school board, we appreciate the members of our community who share their public comments during the designated times of our meeting agenda. This is an important opportunity for the Board of Education to hear from the community. However, it is not a time for two-way communication. A regular meeting of the Board of Education is designated for the Board to conduct the business of the Huron Valley Schools in open session. In accordance with the Open Meeting Act, comments that require follow-up investigation or communication will be handled by our superintendent or a member of his team. There are two segments in the agenda for public comments, in Section 3 and also in Section 7, respectfully. Fifteen minutes have been allocated in Section 3 for public comments related to action, which are voting items or non-action items if time allows. The Board of Education will allocate more than fifteen minutes that's allocated in Section 3 so that all public comments on action, voting items, may be heard in that section. All comments on non-action items will take place during Section 7 of the agenda if not already heard within Section 3. All speakers wishing to address this board must be present. All individuals will be given an opportunity to speak. Each individual delivering public comments will have three minutes to share their communication. Individuals may only speak once and cannot share unused time with another person. A timer will be displayed on the screen so individuals can monitor their time. Once three minutes have elapsed, the timer will sound, indicating that public comments have concluded and the microphone will be turned off in preparation for the next speaker. We ask that you share your name, address, and home school, school district before sharing your comments. Furthermore, we request that you refrain from name-calling. Comments must be related to school business and may not include personal attacks unrelated to school business. If you make such comments, the Board of Education President, myself, will, to the extent permitted by the First Amendment, interrupt or end your comment time. If you plan to share public comments, please complete the form that's found in the back of the room and give your form to Ms. Caddell, who's raising her right hand over in the corner. And I thank you for your professionalism and your partnership. With that, we do now have, all seven of us, traffic was a little bad, I understand. That's okay. Well, Ms. Cotter did a fine job.
I'm sure she did. Thank you, Ms. Cotter.
Next on the agenda is items from the Board of Education. I just have one comment, and it's really a comment that I'm making, obviously I'm the Board President, but I'm making it as a community member, a grandparent, and an alumni. I just want to thank each and every one of you on the Board of Education for all the work that you do. The public might see us at one or two formal board meetings in front of the camera, but we all know that we meet numerous times throughout the course of the, course of the month. And it's really focused on what's best for our kids, what's best for our students, and what's best for our community. We, and I'm very proud to be part of this board, I really truly believe that we are extraordinarily high-functioning board, and without you, that wouldn't be possible. So I want to say thank you as, as Board President for all the work that you do on a month, daily and monthly basis for our kids, but more importantly, as a, as a community member and as a parent. We know that every month, we at least meet once or twice formally in our subcommittees, where a lot of the work of the school district takes place. We have the Executive Committee, the Teaching and Learning Committee, our Finance and Operation Committee, our Marketing and Communications, and Legislative Committee. Public also probably doesn't understand that each of, each of you are ambassadors to various schools. And at that, and those are your schools that you, you are a member of, that, that we communicate with the various administrators, and you're invited to a number of activities. In addition to that, a number of you belong to other committees or are representative of our school board. For example, we have the Oakland County School Board Association Committees that we meet on a monthly basis, and many of us attend those. Some of you are representatives of the Whitelake Township, Highland Township, Milford Village Liaison, and, and a variety of other types of, of committees that you represent for us. But I do want to personally say thank you to two individuals. One is Amy Grisimkoski, who is our alternate for our Oakland County, what is it, Government Relations Committee, and our representative, and I believe for, what, about three years, four years now, and that's Laura Dodd. And it's extraordinarily important, and it's an extraordinarily important committee because the Oakland County Government Relations Committee has a direct effect on what we are able to do as a school district, not only from a local standpoint, but from a state standpoint and from a national standpoint. In the coming days, in fact, I believe next week, Laura Dodd will be representing not only our school board, but the entire Huron Valley community in Washington, D.C. And that is an opportunity at the national level to provide opportunities for Laura, representing all of us, to talk about at the, in Washington, D.C., how important it is that they continue funding the programs that they presently fund for us. We receive significant dollars from the federal government through the Department of Education and from a variety of other sources. We receive millions of dollars as it relates to providing dollars for some of our most at-risk students in special education, within Title I, Title IV, and we receive a significant amount of money from the, the federal government to help support our free and reduced lunch and actually providing opportunities for our kiddos to be prepared to learn because we all know that starting off the day with a, with a breakfast and having a, a sound, nutritious, nutritional lunch is extraordinarily important. So I just want to say thank you for the ongoing work that you do, Laura and Amy, as the alternate, representing us on a monthly basis, but at the same time, allowing Huron Valley to have a voice at both the, the county, at the state, and starting, I believe, on Sunday, and Laura's leaving on Saturday to go to Washington, D.C. to represent us, and is not returning until Wednesday or Thursday. And that's pretty much done on her own time. So, thank you very much for representing us. I appreciate that, and I appreciate all of you as a community member for the work that you do. So, thank you again. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sala under recognition.
Thank you, President Weisman, and I will turn it over to Ms. Roth.
Good evening. Tonight, we want to recognize a special education, a special educator who not only makes a difference in the lives of students in the classroom each day, but also makes a difference in our community. Mr. Isaac Perry leads a very important committee called the Huron Valley MLK Day Committee. This committee just completed its twentieth anniversary celebration of MLK Day, which included a reception at the shack, the Incredible March on Main, to record-breaking support for the meal drive and assembly to benefit Community Sharing Outreach Center. These events have grown tremendously over the years, thanks to Mr. Perry and his committee's passion and commitment. This year, approximately 250 participants braved the very cold temperatures for the March on Main. While this march is always a big draw, there are many other events that are just as important to the committee and our community. If you would like to read more about everything this committee does, as well as watch a video highlight of the march, you can go to our website, hvs.org. But right now, I would like Ms. Lindsay Cotter, along with Mr. Isaac Perry and members of the Huron Valley MLK Day Committee, appear so we can recognize you for all of your hard
Mr. Perry, before I begin, would you please introduce your group?
Absolutely. These are several members who help out, volunteering on the Huron Valley MLK Day Committee. I have Doris Landry Cruz, I have Fariba Hickenson, I have Donna Gao, and Laura Kowalski, and they are a few of the many committee members who, who help out every year.
All right, well, thank you very much. I do have to, I will and will present you with our Huron Valley Hero Award, and this says today bestowed this day in honor to Isaac Perry, Huron Valley MLK Day Committee, twentieth anniversary, for outstanding representation of Huron Valley Schools today, January 27th of 2025. I want to thank, thank you very much. Now, not to go and recognize, but I'd also like to recognize the volunteers that are here today. And again, on behalf of the board, we'd like you all to have a special coin that we give to our heroes. So thank you. So I am going to ask Isaac just to say a few words, if he will, but I also wanted to take this opportunity because Barb said something about a very cold day. I've walked that parade for eighteen of the twenty years, and it is always the coldest day in January. So, on that note, Mr. Isaac, please say something for me.
Sure. So, hitting the twentieth year was especially gratifying for me personally. I grew up in Huron Valley Schools. I remember distinctly, when I was in sixth grade, I asked my teacher, what is Martin Luther King Junior Day, because it was in the news, and it was basically just kind of brushed off, and it was like, well, we don't really celebrate that here, and, you know, and, and I remember that because I remember, I think about what a lost opportunity that was for me as a student to discover the benefit of community service and the power of being involved in your community. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to discover that until much later on in life, but when I got the opportunity to bring MLK Day to Huron Valley and to, and to continue beating that drum, I was glad to embrace it. I was glad that my own children grew up in a, in a school district where the holiday was recognized, and I'm proud to have these wonderful committee members and volunteers stepping up and helping along the way. They know I would not be able to do that, this without them. So, the twentieth anniversary is very special for me personally and very special for us as a committee, and we just thank you very much for the, for the recognition.
And thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Good care.
We can just have you guys hold on for one minute. We would like to take a picture of you with the board, but first, I would love the board, to give the board an opportunity to ask any questions or have any comments.
Comments, questions? Laura?
I talked to Isaac's daughter at the march this year, who is twenty years old. So you're right, Isaac, you prepared this so she could live in a community where we recognize this every year for her, and what a fortunate young lady she is, and we are fortunate to have you in our district. Thank you.
Anyone else? I personally, on behalf of our community, want to thank you, Isaac, and the rest of the committee, for, for the invaluable opportunities that you're providing. I think it's interesting, once again, our community is very special, and you're an example of that. Not only do you, are you a teacher at Lakeland, and you do a tremendous job there, but you grew up in this community, and you certainly do much, much more than be a teacher at Lakeland. You're embedded in the community, and that's what makes this community special. So, thank you very much, and thank you, volunteers.
Give him another round of applause. Let's go. Can you get the board to come out? I think we're starting to relax. As our board is making their way back to the seats, I do also have the privilege of honoring an extraordinary group of young girls who have shown us all the true spirit of kindness, compassion, and community. This summer, our Brownie Troop 77818 from Heritage Elementary set out to make a difference in the lives of children who might otherwise go without gifts this holiday season. Through hard work, dedication, and plenty of teamwork, these amazing young ladies organized lemonade stands throughout the summer, raising funds to purchase Christmas gifts for children in need. Their effort was not just about selling lemonade, it was about serving others, spreading joy, and proving that even the smallest hands can make the biggest difference. Their selflessness and determination have truly inspired us all and reminded us again of the power of giving back. It's my honor to invite them up here today so we can show our gratitude and recognize the incredible impact they've made in our community. So please join me in celebrating the heartwarming efforts of Troop 77818.
Yeah, come here, girls, I want you to stand right in front here. All right, turn around and look at the people. There you go. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to present this award to our group of Brownies for their outstanding work to the community. They worked very hard and in turn turned around and did something very special. So it's my honor today to recognize these kids. Let me ask real quick, where was this lemonade stand set up?
At Alex's house.
At your house? Okay. Well, I'm going to have to, you're going to do it again next summer? Maybe, eh? Well, I'll look for your lemonade stand. So, young ladies, on behalf of our Board of Education, today I'm going to give this award to Bounty, Brownie Troop Number 77818 at Heritage Elementary School for your outstanding representation of Huron Valley Schools. So on behalf of the board, I'm going to give you this certificate, and you can, you can share carrying it. Congratulations. Yeah, girls, let's turn around and get a picture.
Turn around, face the board. You told me you weren't going to be nervous, right? They look very brave, don't they? Anybody on the board have any comments or questions of them? Yes, Jacob?
I just wanted to say, excuse me, thank you, girls, first, for coming out tonight. This is, it's a true treasure, true honor for us to be here to honor you guys for that just heartfelt giving back to the community. That's a wonderful thing to see and be a part of, so thank you for what you guys did and continue to do.
Took us outside. This is our first year as a unified school. I am so grateful for Ms. Dodd for going and representing us because, as you likely know, Special Olympics is heavily funded by the Department of Education and needs our support. This year, we held a T-shirt contest. Our T-shirts arrived today. And we have a scrimmage that will be this Friday, which will be against Milford High School and Bloomfield High School. So we are quite excited for this giant kickoff this year. And also, the significant change, I think, in community through our school with this initiative.
All right, so to close, we had a student in our program, a fifth grader, write a letter about his experience at the program, and I'll read it to you. It's, "Hello, my name is Jacob. I am a fifth grader at Lakewood Elementary. I've been at Lakewood since kindergarten. Mrs. M. is so kind. Mrs. Larch helped me learn. Ms. Sossen lets me run her class for morning meeting. The ASD program has helped me. It has helped me learn. I use voice-to-text for my writing. Brooklyn is a friend. I have good memories of Mrs. M., and I like going on field trips with my homeroom."
Thank you, guys, for letting us present about our program. We always have, we know we have a ways to go in everything that we do, but I'm really proud in the less than two years that I've been here, the direction that we've gone, the amount of belonging our students feel and our staff feels at Lakewood. So thanks for having us.
Thank you very much. Don't go anywhere else. Lindsay?
Yes, I just wanted to say to your ASD program, thank you very much for what you do. Autism and on-the-spectrum really has only come to light in the last 20 years. And what's been going on at Lakewood in recent years, you're really above the curve. I really appreciate what you're doing for your kids, and I know you're making a difference. It's always a struggle sometimes, but I think you've done, you've done well and worked around that. So again, a big thank you for what you do. You've really made a difference for our kids here in Huron Valley. Thank you.
Laura?
So, one of the things they always ask us when we go to Washington is to bring specific examples and specific stories of success. So, my email address is laura.dodd@hvs.org. So please, send me your advocacy and let me help get that to the people who need to hear it when I'm there. I do my best work when I have stories from you. My stories from sitting at this table about wonderful brownies and great presentations are nice, but your stories are what I would rather tell. So laura.dodd@hvs.org. Send them my way.
Might also get a T-shirt.
I would love it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, it's Amy.
I just want to say you're rock stars. I was thinking as you were talking, and I apologize, I'm getting emotional. Forty-five years ago, when I was in elementary school, we separated out our kids with any kind of a challenge. Today, we include them. They are not separate. They are with us. ASD is an incredible, it, it, sometimes it's an incredible gift. And ASD students make ASD adults. ASD adults are part of our workforce. They're part of our economy. They make us go forward. And so, I'm, I'm so proud of the work that you do, day in and day out. I know it's a challenge, but I appreciate this work, and I appreciate the fact that you would come today and talk to us. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? I found it interesting. Every one of your slides had inspiring and building futures, one student at a time. The power of public education is we accept all students, no matter where they're at, and we provide the necessary things that they need to be successful. And, as I said, that's the power. And our ASD population is extraordinarily diverse. It takes special people, like yourselves, to work with students that are autistic. It's personal in nature because I hear a lot of these stories at, at, at home, around the kitchen table, because my son teaches high school ASD students. So I know exactly where you're coming from. And I appreciate the work. I always tell him, he's very special. I'm telling you, you are very special. And please pass that on to your pair of pros, that they are truly, truly special people. Because not only here in Huron Valley, but talking to my son, he says the same thing. He could not do what he's doing without the pair of pros. So, thank you. You are special. And, like I said, the power of public education is exactly what we have in front of us where we say we inspire and provo, and, and build futures, one student at a time. So, thank you very much. No other comments? Thank you again. Our brownies have left, all right? The brownies have left, but Isaac, and, and your volunteers in Lakewood, you certainly can stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, but I'm going to take a short recess. I know you have a lot of work to do to get ready for the day that faces you tomorrow. So, it's up to you, but we're going to take a short recess. Our recess is over, and since recess is over, we'll start off with our superintendent, Dr. Sala.
Thank you, Mr. President. Where did everybody go?
I, I hope you don't take this personally.
Oh, gosh. Why, they missed.
It's a pretty big room.
Yeah, they missed all my wonderful remarks.
They're, they're watching at home.
Well, I do want to take-
See, look at, look at Mr. Van Gogh. He came back.
Jeffrey came back. I'm so glad. So, couple thoughts this evening that I would like to share for those who are clearly not here in our audience, for those who are watching this at home. For those who are going to watch this in the future at home, January is Board Appreciation Month, for those of you who are unaware. And so, for me, this is, this is a time where, I mean, I'd just be honest, as a superintendent, I kind of count my blessings, because I don't know if anybody ever watches some of the drama that unfolds and, and unfolds in other school districts with boards of education. We are very fortunate that we have a high-functioning board, where there are diverse opinions, there are different backgrounds, where individuals have their own personal convictions and beliefs. However, that never bubbles into a space where there's anger, or bitterness, or a grudge that is held. People listen to, on this board, listen to one another with respect, and are very comfortable sharing when a point of view may not be shared all the way across the board. And you know what? For our listening audience, that's actually a good thing. It's good to have differing opinions and beliefs and perspectives. And so, as a superintendent, I am extraordinarily thankful for this Board of Education. It makes it enjoyable to be here as, as an employee of the school district, and it makes me want to remain a part of, of a school district. And I know, I, I know, I, I'm just one person, but I, I, I can, I'm looking at the code team. I can tell you right now that this Board of Education, in part, is part of the reason why everyone works very hard on behalf of this community. And also, I would add, for our, our listening, our post-watching audience who sees this after this is broadcast, you know, our boards of education come from a variety of backgrounds. They are not compensated for this work. They put in at least 15 to 25 hours a week. You heard that correct, 15 to 25 hours a week, on top of many of them who are working full-time jobs. They do this purely on a volunteer basis. They attend meetings, they read board notes, they review board meeting materials, they review bid packages, they review board operating procedures and policies, they respond to community and staff emails, they review legislation and law changes, they attend professional development on how to become better board members. It takes quite a bit to be a successful board member. And I think what is so impressive is they sacrifice time away from their families, from their spouses, from their loved ones, from their friends. And they do this on, on a purely volunteer basis because they care about the community that they serve. So, board members, I'm really appreciative for you. There's a small token of our appreciation on behalf of the entire school district and community. There's a nice thermos there, as well as, I know you love the cards that you receive from the elementary kiddos, and so, enjoy your reading, and thank you for everything you do on behalf of this community. And that's, that's my comments this evening, Mr. President. Clapped out there. I heard, Jennifer, thank you.
Student leadership, Denise?
No student leadership tonight, but we will have student leadership next board meeting.
And our student leadership participates very actively in your teaching, learning, technology group that you chair.
Yes, we had two student leaders at our last meeting that I'll report on, and yes, they are engaged and helpful. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Association communication, Jennifer?
Good evening. Today, the HVEA in our district had our first bargaining session. Time flew. We did it again. It's time that we filled with so much anticipation and definitely some stress, too. Our bargaining team feels a lot of weight on our shoulders to negotiate a contract for 530 educators with varying wants and needs. It is a huge responsibility. And I am guessing I'm not the only bargaining team member who finds it difficult to sleep the night before our bargaining sessions. As I talked about this earlier in the year, our bargaining team members are specifically picked to be representative of our educators. On our team this year, we have myself, Don Hogaboom, Natalie Moore, Heidi Utterback, Jim Sholdis, Emily Minequick, Lisa Dunleavy, and Therese Fitzpatrick. Therese is our MEA Uniserve Director. Her knowledge and perspective and expertise is so important to our team to guide us through the bargaining process. Therese has dedicated her life to advocating for educators to make sure that we are an integral part of the decisions being made from our chosen profession. I want all of you tonight to hear from our bargaining team members to help you understand what is important to them in this process. All eight of us highly value the collaborative approach of interest-based bargaining. Our ability to share our stories, collectively brainstorm ideas, and reach consensus is integral to this process. Both Therese and Jim specifically let me know how important IBB is to them. Jim said, "Through IBB, each side has opened, yet difficult at times, conversations to find a workable solution for all." Like Jim, Lisa's only been bargaining for the past few years. Both of them are extremely passionate, passionate about advocating for our HVEA members. Lisa states that it's an honor and a privilege to have a voice for our association. She feels people don't always know that bargaining often involves a lot of problem-solving, listening, and of course, out-of-the-box thinking. And even though it's mentally draining, it is 100% worth it. Emily is newer to our bargaining team. She was picked specifically because she's been an educator for only seven years. Emily is a graduate of Huron Valley Schools, and is excited to be on our team again. She knows firsthand the incredible educators that we have in the valley, and it's important, important to her to bring the voice of our newer educators and their unique needs into the table. Our most experienced bargainers are Don, Heidi, and Natalie. Each of them have been bargaining for many, many years. And they've worked hard to negotiate contracts and new pieces of information into our contracts. And they feel strongly that they come back time after time because our working conditions as educators is our students' learning conditions. Don let me know that as he got more involved in the HVEA, he felt deeply about taking care of our educators. And through bargaining, he's learned the importance of clear contract language. Natalie's passionate about all of us working together as a team and negotiating appropriate teacher compensation for our workloads. And Heidi, she brings her experience as a lower elementary teacher, and she never hesitates to share her thoughts at the table, even when it may lead to an uncomfortable, difficult conversation. Finally, although negotiating raises our salaries is imperative to everything we do, there have been other gains throughout the years which really stick out to our bargaining team and have made a big difference for our educators. And here are a few of those highlights. Decreasing our salary schedule down to 16 steps to be consistent with the districts around us. A full rewrite of Schedule B and increased pay for those who take on those additional responsibilities. The ability for anybody coming out of our central sick bank, which means you don't have any sick days left, you can now borrow from next year. And this is all about our new moms, because we know those newborns get sick, and they don't have to go unpaid. And finally, we have a floating workday in August, which allows us to get paid for the time we set up our classrooms before school starts. I know you all know that bargaining's a really big deal. It takes a tremendous amount of time and energy, both during those negotiation days and all the hours and hours that our team puts in outside of those days. I'm incredibly grateful for our HVEA bargaining team, who's dedicated for putting the work in to ensure that we negotiate an agreement which will be looked positively when presented to our members and which will be ratified. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have board correspondents. Secretary Pistana, do we have any board correspondents?
Yes, today I received an email from Cheryl Hoffman from the MASB, and it was about, a reminder about board elections. I sent it to Ms. Kadel and Mr. Wiseman, and just, we have to decide by March 5th, 1:00 PM.
Great, thank you. Next, Treasurers report?
None at this time.
All right. Reports from committees. I'll start off with the Executive Committee. We met on January 21st, 2025, at 8:30 AM. It was virtual because we had a freeze day. Not a snow day, a freeze day. The meeting was called to order. The president and myself, along with Member Dodd, Member Pistana, Dr. Sala, and Ms. Kadel. No one was absent. There were no public comments, and the regular agenda consisted of going over tonight's agenda. There was nothing to report under school safety. Dr. Sala shared that he and John Rebe attended the moving and packing meeting at Oak Valley with the Oak Valley staff, and will attend upcoming meetings at Harbor High School. As it related to redistricting, they discussed the process with staff. And Dr. Sala answered questions about staffing changes due to the upcoming redistricting. Dr. Sala also shared a staffing update, shared with the committee that he met with Oak Valley staff to discuss staffing assignments for next school year and provide an overview of the HR process that will be followed before staff placement within our middle schools. Middle school design plan update. The committee discussed the current focus groups, including safety and security, as well as TLT, while noting that additional groups are still in development. Dr. Sala shared that all minutes from these focus groups meetings will be made available to the entire middle school planning group via the hub notes. Special education. Dr. Sala continued to collaborate with consultants and is waiting for the final recommendation. He has upcoming meetings, and I believe those have already occurred, and he will continue to update the Board of Education. Legislative update. Dr. Sala noted that PA 152, the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act, remained in limbo with ongoing discussions regarding the bill on hard cap, as well as legislative conversations surrounding minimum wage and sick leave. Other items, the board discussed Policy 3110, Conflict of Interest, and recommended it be discussed in more detail at the February 25th, 2025 Executive Committee meeting. We adjourned at 10:29, and our next meeting is scheduled for February 25th at 1:00 at the administrative offices. TLT Committee. Ms. Pistana?
Yes, TLT met January 14th at the administration building. Meeting was called to order at 3:35. Present were myself, Ms. Cotter, Ms. Dodd, Mr. Deverneer, Dr. Sala, Mr. Lindberg, Ms. Bjorkman, Dr. Nemeth, Mr. Endicott, Ms. Thompson, Ms. Misca, Ms. Horwitz, and then our two student leaders, Michael and Leanna. Absent was, were Mr. Dimick. Public comment, there was none. We had no unfinished business. New business was the junior kindergarten phonics resource. The TLT department has continued to update curriculum with current state standards and adopt resources to support effective practices. Mr. Lindberg and Ms. Misca shared a supplemental phonics early literacy resource, hand-to-mind, guided phonics and beyond units for our junior kindergarten classrooms. The resource has been well-received by the JK teachers, and they have piloted the program and aligns with the current curriculum being taught in grades K through 5. Funds for this purchase are budgeted in the 35J Early Literacy Professional Development Curriculum and Supplies Grant. The TLT Committee supported this item, appearing as new business on tonight's agenda. Board policy 5500 updates. We moved this item to our next meeting. Administrative guideline updates. Mr. Deverneer provided us copies of updated administrative guidelines within the 7000 and 8000 series. Our standing agenda items, we talked about strategic plan updates. Mr. Lindberg shared that middle school core and elective programming curriculum work is continuing. A board presentation on this work is planned for a future meeting. Dr. Nemeth shared that the gifted and talented outreach program has moved into the middle schools this year. Under safety and security updates, Mr. Endicott provided an update on the power school breach that affected local school districts, did not affect us. He also provided some department updates. Under student leadership, Leanna shared that IA West just held the Personal Passion Project Expedition, which showcased many of one-of-a-kind projects for the sophomore class. She said it was fun to see the creativity of her fellow classmates. And Michael shared the students at Harbor have been able to do a lot of outreach activities this year, including food and clothing drives. More community activities are being considered for the spring, and he recognized Harbor teacher, Mrs. Stokes, for her support with leadership students on these efforts. There was no public comment at the end, and we adjourned at 4:15. Our next meeting is tomorrow at 4:00 at Administration.
Thank you very much. Finance and operations?
Finance and operations met on Wednesday, January 22nd at 8:00 AM. It was a virtual meeting due to the cold day off. Mr. Wiseman was present, myself, Ms. Ryan, Dr. Sala, Mr. Van Gogh, Mr. Rebe, Ms. Kerrigan, Ms. Lozo, Ms. Maruskin, Mr. Wolford, and Mr. Brown from the MAC Service Corp. There was no public comment. We do not have anything on the consent agenda today. We do have some unfinished business, the orchestra shell system purchase for Lakeland High School. The committee discussed the bid process and received clarification on liability insurance and installation logistics. Administration is asking the board to approve Fantasy Integration Updated Proposal in the amount of $212,000, with a contingency of $25,000 for a total amount of $238,268 at this evening's board meeting. There was no new business. We had some safety and security updates. We talked about the middle school design focus groups and security, which met January 21st. Discussion included the balance of providing the ideal educational setting while ensuring the building has the correct safety and security measures in place. And we are appreciative of the involvement with our local law enforcement, our security consultants, and the Zebra K-9 representative. All contributed to the productive conversation on the beginning stages of school safety and design. We also heard from the MAC Service Corp. Chuck Wolford from MAC Service Corp. gave us an overview on where our partnerships began in 2019 and how it's grown into the 2020, how it has grown into 2025. Assisting HVS with over 80 bids, 60 contracts, and a goal this year of attaining another 20 contracts. The committee asked engaging questions and expressed their satisfaction with our partnership. Mr. Van Gogh spoke of the financial picture's success, generating $1 million in co-op fees as a result of our procurement program. Side note, kudos to our finance team. That is a fantastic program. Recreation and Community Ed update. Shannon Lozo, the Director of Rec and Ed, provided the committee with a three-year financial review. The program currently being offered, along with the number of registrations, which continue to be on the rise. Ms. Lozo also discussed all the happenings at Rec and Ed, including partnerships throughout the committee. Also sidebar, Rec and Ed rocks. These are some amazing programs. That's my official thought. Board policies, administrative guidelines, finance and operations. The committee has no further questions or concerns on the review of the 6000 series and administrative guidelines. We'll move forward with these updates online. Middle school steering committee update. Focus group meetings have been set with TLT to discuss strategic plan and the security focus groups as mentioned above. Our next steering committee meeting will be scheduled once these have been completed. We, the committee reviewed the general fund budget to actual as of November 30th, and there were no real concerns. Future discussion items. First and second quarter adjustments are being completed and will be brought to an upcoming FNO meeting. John Rebe provided an update on the White Lake Middle School and Rec Pool demolitions, which are moving along. Maintenance has kept an eye on all the buildings during this week's cold spell. Muir's Middle School sixth-grade wing exchange unit is operational, with the second boiler slated to be fired up by the end of this week. Administration building relocation meetings have started taking place, and a tour of Milford High School will be scheduled with the Board of Education and Administration. Our meeting adjourned at 9:27 AM. Our next meeting is February 5th at 8:00 AM. I hope to see you there.
Thank you. Communications, marketing, and legislative?
Yes, our last meeting was January 14th at the administration building, called to order at 2:34. Members, president, myself, Ms. Grzemkowski, Ms. Cotter, Ms. Rothler, Dr. Sala, and Ms. Wills. No public comment. We discussed redistricting and the success of the information online and the ability to communicate with families. Staffing FAQ is being developed regarding the changes at the middle schools for our staff. Rec and Ed rebranding came for a review, presented the idea of, of a little bit of branding and fresh look for their move to the Oak Valley Center. Community decided to take a closer look as what would be needed for the whole building when, when the move happens. We reviewed school letterhead and came up with some really lovely ideas that will be shared with the schools and- shared with the schools and finalized for the next meeting. Safety and Security, Communication gave an update on OK to Say. Also let the committee know that Oakland County Board of Commissioners voted on increasing rates for the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, which means increasing rates that we will pay for a lot of services that we have as it relates to safety and security. The committee discussed looking into safety and security support from Oakland County. Next Legislative Communication, community discussed State Representative Ann Bolan reaching out to the Board of Education. Next, we talked about junior kindergarten and kindergarten orientation prep. Communication let the committee know preparation is underway for JKK orientation this year with graphics that are complete and materials at the printer. Committee discussed local areas to drop off flyers about orientation, business catering to the demographics, libraries, community sharing and daycares. We adjourned at 3:30. Next meeting is February 11th, 2:30, Administration Building.
Thank you very much. Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to Consent. We have three items, Exhibit A1 through A3, Minutes, Check Register and Personnel Report. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Thank you.
And I'll support that.
Motion made by Member Dimick, seconded by Member Cotter. Anybody have any questions regarding the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dimick?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Ms. Grzymkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Unfinished business, orchestra shell system purchase, Lakeland High School, Exhibit B. I know this was on the agenda as a new business at our last board meeting. We've had a number of opportunities to have discussions. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sala.
I don't believe we've had any questions since the last meeting. Have you, Mr. Van Goghtham?
No.
So we would ask for approval this evening. Actually, we did have one question about lights. Yeah, there are lights. There are lights. So, yes, that was in the specs. Ms. Dodd had a question about lights being located within it. It is in the specs.
All right. What I'm going to do is take a motion in a second and then I'll open it up for the board if there's any further clarifications or discussions. So may I have a motion? Motion made by?
Yes, I would move that we approve the orchestra shell system purchase for our Lakeland High School as it was presented.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Member Cotter, seconded by Member Dimick. I will open it up to any questions that anybody might have. I do not see any. Yes, Amy?
Just make one comment. This has come to the Finance and Operations Committee twice, two or three times, twice. And one of our concerns, Ms. Ryan pointed it out, was some warranty language and there was some, what happens from the time that we technically possess it to when it's installed. We went back to the company and we got some clarification on that. I appreciate Ms. Ryan's quick pickup. Those contracts are long and there's a lot of language in there, a lot of words, all at about seven-point font. And she went through it all and I appreciate the fact that that was one of the things that she picked up on, something that protects our district when we ask those types of questions. So we did get a favorable answer and I also appreciate Meg Weeks for doing the due diligence and finding options for us besides just the one that we were all familiar with. And this seems like a very good system that will work for hopefully a very long time at Lakeland to provide their theater group with what they need.
Thank you. Yes, in fact, the contract actually reflects an addendum that was executed and signed by the company as a related ownership in shipping. So appreciate the work that was done on that from board members and also from our administration. So I do have a motion. I do have a second. If there are no other questions or clarifications, let's go ahead with a vote. Ms. Pastana?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Dimick?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Grzymkowski?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Under New Business, we have Exhibit C, JK Phonics Early Literacy Resource Purchase. Dr. Sala?
Thank you, and I would ask Mr. Deverneer to address this item.
All right, as you heard earlier in the TLT Committee report from Ms. Pastana, this was something that we shared with the TLT Committee, but we've been continuing to work on our curriculum alignment with state standards for our JK program. So the board previously has adopted phonemic awareness resources and the Hegarty resources for JK classrooms, but the committee has been working on a phonics resource. So I'm going to invite Jennifer Bjorkman, our Director of State and Federal Programs, and Kathleen Miska, our ELA Teacher Leader, who everybody is familiar with, to present tonight on our JK phonics resource.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. We're excited today to talk to you a little bit about JK and phonics purchase for our program. The funds for these purchases are coming through a state grant called Section 35J. We have come before the board previously with purchases for decodables and a spelography resource, word study resource, using these funds. So we are back again with additional resources and we will be back very soon in the near future to also discuss additional resources we'd like to purchase with these grant funds. But for today, we are here to talk about some resources for JK. The 35JK Grant, or the 35J Early Literacy Grant is to support best practices in literacy through curriculum, professional development and supplies. Huron Valley has been allocated more than $1 million to be used through September of 2025. As with any grants for state and federal programs, there are always compliance requirements. So with this state grant, several of the compliance requirements revolve around professional learning in the science or evidence-based reading practices for elementary-age students. So we are to provide professional learning for all pre-K through 5 teachers and administrators on the science of reading. We had our first training session last week with the Reading League with our administrator, elementary administrators, and our literacy coaches also attended, and it was really fantastic learning. And we are excited to bring that to all of our teachers at the elementary level. Another compliance requirement is that we develop a comprehensive literacy program. And as you know, we are in the global review phase and moving into resource review and Kathleen and her team have done an excellent job with Debbie Tallin, leading that work for our elementary teams. We also need to work on ensuring that all of this information is posted on our website, which we already have had in process with Atlas. All of our curriculum resources are posted there. So we are well in compliance and working on our way to meeting all the requirements for this grant. So just a little bit about our junior kindergarten program. We began the program in the 2016-17 school year and the development of that program began with some of our, with committee members, including teachers, literacy coaches and administration. The fall of 2017 was when we had our first JK program in Huron Valley with six sections run in five different buildings. And so from then until now, we have had a variety of different sections in different buildings. This year, we are excited that we have a junior kindergarten in every elementary school. This is the first year that we've had that. So just a wonderful opportunity for our young children and their families. And so this year, we have a JK in every program and Oxbow Elementary has two this year. So with that, as we've been working with our JK Committee during the PRC or our Progress Report Process, there became an identified need for consistent resources throughout the program. So this is where the need for the phonics resource came from. So it came from the work that our teams are doing. So Kathleen is going to talk to you a little bit now about the resource we'd like to purchase for our teams.
So actually, I want to say a little bit first about our existing resources. When the JK program was developed, they focused on phonemic awareness, so just awareness and ability to manipulate individual speech sounds separate from their letter correspondencies. And we had adopted the Hegarty Phonemic Awareness Resource as kind of a core for that work in JK. As we've worked as a group to better understand the science of reading and the research base behind that, our JK teachers identified a need to be in greater kind of common collaboration with each other about how they addressed phonics or that correlation between sound and spelling, so the graphing phoneme correspondencies between letters at a JK appropriate level. We're not expecting our JKers to master all aspects of those correspondencies in English and JK, but to get them started down those paths. And so this cohort of nine teachers started, a few of them started piloting with the guidance of their Lit Coach, the Resource Guided Phonics and Beyond, and at their November cohort meeting came to consensus on moving into a field test phase for the entire cohort. So starting as a group of entire, all nine of them, to work at adopting and moving toward this resource. This is a resource that is supplemental in scope. It is a small piece of the literacy work that they do. It will need therefore some unit instructional materials as well as student manipulatives, which I can show you here too, as well as, and what we like about this program is that it's developmentally appropriate for our JK students. And it works really nicely in alignment with our adopted K2 resource for phonics, U Fly. And we may find some needs to kind of strategically resequence some things, but for the most part, it's a pretty well-aligned resource. And it meets, of course, the requirements of our 35J funds, as Jennifer already mentioned, and the materials are wonderfully durable to kind of match our usual curriculum review timeline. So this purchase will include the core instructional components, so that will be the teacher resources for units 1 and 2 of this program, as well as a whole classroom manipulatives kit that will have sufficient materials for all of our JK students up to class size max in that program. So that will include some things like the whisper phones so that students can practice the sounds if you'd like to try. You're welcome to, as well as some manipulative Elkanen boxes so students can practice isolating individual sounds and swapping different sounds in and out as they start to work on blending those sounds together into words, which is a part of Unit 2 of the resource. So that's kind of the core of our instructional work and that will also include one day of professional learning for our teachers, we're hoping in March, pending your approval of this program, to bring them all together up to speed with best practices in the program. What's wonderful about the grant, though, is that we can also add to it some additional resources that are centers-based and a little bit play-based for our JK students. Most of these resources are still being developed by hand-to-mind, but we've seen some really promising, I love watching all of you whisper in it, that will have some appropriate centers activities for our JK students that allow them to play and practice these concepts. And these are coming in June of this year, so we can add those kind of into our purchase, as well as some very early-level decodable texts that align with the second unit of the resource. So we're very, very excited about these opportunities and the ways that they can fit into our JK curriculum.
So with all that, we would like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the purchase of Hand-to-Mind Guided Phonics and Beyond, including the activity supplements to support our students and teachers in junior kindergarten.
Great.
Thank you. And any questions?
Open up to questions. I have a couple. All right. Sounds like a wonderful program. I know that I, as a board member, kind of keeping track of all the things that you've done, extraordinarily busy as it relates to literacy. And you mentioned on the, I believe, the first slide was that we were allocated a little over $1 million, all right? And it has to be spent by September 2025, okay? This particular grant, this particular section is about $17,000 plus 10% for contingencies. This is more me, I guess. Maybe I'm speaking on behalf of some other board members, but I'm not sure exactly where we're at with all of this. You've been extraordinarily busy and we've done a lot of stair stepping to implement this and to meet this, but it would be helpful for me to know where we're at as it relates to the whole continuum. And I don't know if it would be appropriate now, or you could send something, or Dr. Sala could supply that to me or to the rest of the board, so that we kind of know all the things that we've implemented, because obviously, one of the requirements is to put this out on our website. So it would be helpful to me if I knew exactly where we were at and where this fits into everything else that we've adopted.
Do you want to respond to that, or do you feel more comfortable putting something together that I can share with the board?
We can do both. Kathleen can give it.
Okay.
That would be great.
Yeah, go ahead.
So if you recall, last year we brought to you a purchase of decodable texts for our K2 groups. That was a ballparking about a third of this total, a little maybe slightly less than a third of this total amount. We are also working on additional classroom, library resources for all of our kindergarten, pre-K classrooms, including our specials and ancillary staff and books for our administrators to have available for students in their offices as well. That'll be probably another third ballpark of this total. And so this final third includes professional learning opportunities and a couple of other pieces folded into that. Oh, and spelography, of course, was another one. So actually, my math is getting fuzzy at this point. This is why I do ELA. But we can give you a more precise total.
Yeah. Yeah, we can put, yeah, thank you. We can put, we can put a list of all the resources cost, when we implemented and so forth, so on and so forth.
I'm curious, but you know, talking to parents and we're doing a lot of literacy and our focus appropriately is literacy. And I know one of the requirements that you stated is, is report to MDE and post on HVS website our literacy curriculum and benchmark assessments. I assume that's, that's in the works and that will be completed as we adopt?
So we, MDE will ask for a report when the grant period is over. They have already asked for an update, so we did send preliminary information to them regarding who has attended professional development and what are our future plans for that, with the bulk of that coming on the February 25th and May 6 PD days for our teams. So those, we will be reaching the majority of our staff on those days. Our curriculum and assessments are already listed on our website under, in Atlas, so all of these resources that are curriculum resources are listed there. Our supplemental resources are not always listed in that curriculum material, but anything that is part of the curriculum that the teachers are using is listed in Atlas.
So that requirement of reporting it out on the website through the MDE, we're meeting that requirement by having it out on Atlas?
Yes, and we always have. I mean, we've had that there for some time, not prior to it becoming a requirement.
Okay. But we're, obviously, as we're adopting new curriculum, new resources, that website's being updated also.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Seeing none, we're going to have the next couple of weeks. This is under New Business. If there are any questions, please direct them to Dr. Sala and he'll move it on to the appropriate individuals to get those. But if you could supply that, that would be very helpful and then pass that on to Dr. Sala and he'll share it with the rest of the board. Okay? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, public comments. Last chance for public comments. Seeing none, we have Good and Welfare. Yes, Michelle?
I just wanted to congratulate Grace Warner. She graduated from Lakeland High School, competed in the X Games this weekend in the women's snowboard street style. She killed it. She did amazing. So she took fourth out of eight. So last year she won, this year she was a little injured, but what she did just blew me away. So, yeah, congratulations, Grace.
Okay, now you got to help me. What sport did she participate in and what is it?
Snowboard street style. They're
Okay, you can explain it.
The handrails, you know, they ride the rails and it's crazy.
But winner?
Yeah. No, she didn't. She won last year. This year she got fourth.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Okay.
She's a little injured this year. She did amazing.
I'm not into all those.
It's crazy. It's fun to watch. I don't know how she does it. I don't know how she does it.
Great. Well, thank you for sharing. Anything else? Yes, Amy?
Lakeland High School celebrates its 50th anniversary on February 7th. They have an open house, I think, from 4:00 to 6:00, and then there's a basketball game, Hall of Fame induction. It's going to be a great night. I hope that you will plan to join them to celebrate 50 years. It's pretty incredible.
Great. Super. Anything else? One, real quick, I appreciate Secretary Pistana sharing. We do have an election coming up. You should have received from me the recommendation that I move this on to our marketing, communication, and legislative group to take a look at that, provide a recommendation to us, but obviously, all of you have the information regarding Region 8. Please take a look at that. If you have any comments, concerns, or recommendations, please pass them on to Laura, who's the chairperson. Region 8, we actually have representation in what's called Group 5 and Group 6 of the Michigan Association of School Board Board of Directors. It's Mark Ziegler, Zegler from Wald Lake. He represents us from, with Group 6, which is 11,000 to 40,000 students, and Steve Hyler from Clarkston, who represents us in Group 5, where we fall with pupil membership of between 5,000 and 11,000. This region that we're voting on is Region 8, which consists of the McComb, Oakland, McComb ISD, the Oakland Schools ISD, and the Wayne Resa, and that's why you see candidates kind of from all three of those areas, and we're going to have to kind of take a look at that. And we'll have that as new business at the one board meeting in February. We'll vote on it, I think, on March 3rd. It's due back to Oakland schools by March 5th, so we'll vote on it on the 3rd. So that's the process that I'm recommending that we follow. Anything else? Dr. Sala, do you have anything under Good and Welfare? Seeing none? The meeting is adjourned.